Um, you know, we'll go back and forth. But I just wanted to start off by letting everyone know that we really feel like it's important at this time to change our program name.
Laura, I'm gonna interrupt. I'm so sorry, but the stream, there's something wrong with the stream. Okay, never mind. It just picked up. Go ahead and go.
I can start again, because every single word that I just said was very important, so I will. Yeah, sarcasm. Alright, so I wanted to say that we felt that it was important to name our gifted and talented program LEAP, the Logan Elementary Activity Program, because we feel that it better identifies and explains and describes what we really provide in our, in Logan Township's gifted and talented program. So that is what we wanted the board to know first and foremost, that we're going to begin calling our gifted and talented programming LEAP. And we will begin to, you know, provide that information, obviously, to you all first, and then to the teachers, the parents, and so on. But our gifted and talented program LEAP strives to serve the students who need, really feel like this is important, who need, not necessarily would benefit from, but who need additional challenge. We know the challenge is going on in the classroom, ongoing, but there are some students that need this additional challenge for that creative, thought-provoking academic activities outside the classroom. So we're looking for students that demonstrate gifts and talents, propensities, or needs which enrichment services may help address, cultivate, and explore. So that was something that, you know, kind of is going to be an ongoing theme as we go on and discuss the details of what we are doing right now, that we are looking for students that actually have a need for this type of programming. James now does pull out. He has provided push-in services, where he was supporting students within the classroom. That was when he was actually full-time, no other responsibilities in terms of language arts, teaching language arts, which was, which was an amazing experience for this general education teacher and James and the students. But primarily now, we're speaking of pull-out services.
I don't know if it's okay if I jump in here for a second, Laura, to add something, if I may?
Sure, oh yeah.
So just a quick note, I think also about the title that we talked about, the LEAP programming. I think it not only serves, as you mentioned, to better describe what it is that we really do, this enrichment activity programming, but I think it also is important, from even just a labeling perspective, I think we have, you know, a concern that, you know, calling the program, the gifted and talented program, and of course, that's the purpose that it serves. But titling it that, you know, we wind up frequently with the kids kind of, you know, saying, "Oh, I'm, you know, I'm going to gifted and talented," or "I'm in gifted and talented," which of course, you know, has the unintended implication that those not in the program have no gifts and have no talents, which, you know, is certainly not the message that we have, you know, any intention of sending. So I think that's an important part of that title change as well. You know, not only, again, being more accurate with what it is that we do, but also just being more kind of responsible with our labeling of those sorts of things. And in addition, kind of adding on to the needs-based focus that Laura had mentioned, she said that that's something that's gonna come up a few times throughout our presentation, and I think that's definitely true. You know, and it's really coming from a direction of the gifted and talented field as a whole is moving that way. That really, we're starting to see need-based selection and need-based services as a greater focus within the field, and the field is moving away from seeing giftedness as a diagnosis. Right? And, you know, the services are really meant to meet needs, not to treat diagnoses. That's not really what we do, as far as teachers are concerned, and, you know, that also comes from the angle that giftedness is something that isn't necessarily a fixed construct. Giftedness can develop, and because giftedness can develop, you know, it's something that we need to be constantly kind of evolving with. And again, seeing things as, you know, seeing this as a service meant to meet students' needs. And again, not as a diagnosis.
Yeah, as you could tell, I mean, James has been through three courses, three out of the five courses that Muckers Gifted Education Program provides for that certificate, which I feel like it's so valuable that we have James involved in that program. He's gaining lots of valuable, like he said, updated, current information about the field, along with the various conferences and workshops that we've attended as well. I feel like James is definitely equipped, and has been showing that in many ways, as you'll see.
So I think with the, to continue our, kind of our discussion of our definition and our purpose, we wanted to bring the attention here to the district's vision and mission. We feel that our program really kind of aligns well with the core values of our district's vision and mission. So for instance, our core value of equitable access, for all to reach our highest potential. We really achieve that through utilizing challenging and this kind of creative programming, right? To kind of meet those unique needs, and to help push those kids to that highest potential that our goal seeks out. In addition to that, the value of creating a safe, supportive, and positive learning environment, you know, for kind of the social and emotional development of these students, we're able to achieve as well through a lot of our programming, which does kind of have a lot of reflective portions, a lot of collaboration. I mean, we really, a lot of the programs that we that we run have a lot of close collaboration between students, and some community involvement as well. You know, whether it be just a kind of a presentation, or for some of our programs, there's, you know, even more kind of direct community involvement too. We think that it really aligns well with this goal. So to continue, another value that we think we align closely with is that of celebrating diversity, to, you know, make sure that all feel valued, respected, and celebrated. We do that through our system of identification, which we think is a very fair and equitable system. We really strive to find students and provide opportunities for these students that are unique and that are diverse, whether that be their backgrounds, the gifts that they have, their needs especially, as we mentioned before. We want to make sure that those kids all have the opportunity to explore, to grow, to feel valued. Another value that we align closely with is that every child is capable of learning. This is one that's really kind of right up our alley, and, you know, kind of a strong point for us, that learning is a unique and individualized process. Something that we've done more recently is moving towards choice-based programming for GNT, where students have a very direct and meaningful voice in deciding what programs it is that they take part in, and what programs it is that we develop further. You know, and that really serves to meet their interests, meet their needs, and capture their interest. You know, and enforce, or, you know, kind of help build that engagement in the program, which is so important, especially for our enrichment-style programs. So we feel we very strongly hit that goal. And then last, to take educational risks. You know, challenging and encouraging students to take those steps in our gifted programs that, you know, might be educationally risky, and to possibly make mistakes. And we want to, you know, make sure that they feel comfortable to do that and have opportunities to do that. And we do that through providing these programs, which have challenging, higher-level thinking opportunities, lots of creativity, lots of open-ended projects where the kids can really do with it what they please, you know, they can take it as far as their minds will go. Lots of long-term projects that give them the time to do those sorts of things. So we really think, all in all, one of the primary goals that the vision and the mission sets out is personalized learning for all, and we think that our program is very much an extension of that. Laura, I don't know if you wanna, if you wanna take from here, or I can, if you'd like, whichever you prefer.
Yeah, no, sure. So we wanted to talk a little bit about the committee. Obviously, on this slide, we're just including information about who we are, what we do, and and how we're involved with, you know, supporting James and supporting the program. So it's, members are Mrs. Moran, Mrs. Kelly, Kristy Jansen, Mrs. Haney. We have several teachers, one from the elementary school, and for the middle school, myself, and James. So we feel like we do have a nice, you know, group of people that cover all of most of what we're, you know, the students, the grade levels, and special education, all of what we're looking for when we're making decisions about students. So the committee gets together, we're meeting as needed. We make decisions in selection, we make decisions about programming. We definitely have very strong conversations about, I'd say, mostly about selection. Sometimes it really comes down to specific students, students that may be on the cusp of needing the criteria in terms of, you know, multiple measures, but have like maybe questionable teacher feedback. We'll talk about that later. So we really do, I think, spend a lot of time, when we do meet, to really pay close attention to these important decisions. And everyone has been very invested, very committed, and it's been successful so far, this group of people. So, by the way, Pat, Kristy, whoever else is here that's on the committee, thank you. Thank you for your time and dedication to this. Yeah, so, like I said, we don't meet at regular intervals, we meet as needed. And, you know, we come up with decisions also based upon like, like, let's say we're coming up with things to include on a teacher questionnaire, or things to include on a parent's survey, or, you know, especially it was important when we were coming up with our selection process too. Like, the questioning, the type of information that we want to gather was really important for everyone's feedback, everyone's input, so we spent a lot of time during doing that. Right now, the committee met so far once this year, really to talk about startup, to talk about how we're gonna go about selection in the remote environment, how we're gonna provide programming in the remote environment. So that's where we're, where we are with the committee.
I think we also had a, we had an interesting conversation on, you know, underrepresented groups, underrepresented populations within the gifted and talented program, which is a, you know, a concern for nationwide, even internationally, you know, of addressing underrepresented populations within the GNT program. So we had a very interesting conversation about that as well. So we really get into all sorts of things with the committee. Okay, so this is a, we have an updated selection and identification system. This is kind of the meat and potatoes of our presentation here today. So we'd like to kind of move through this. This is a flowchart outlining a new system, which we've developed for identifying and selecting students for the program. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of go through here, I might, I might bounce around to a couple different things here and there. So hopefully it won't be too terribly tough to follow as my mind bounces. But I'm gonna kind of walk through the flowchart in as logically a direction as I can, and talk through some things. So it begins with a universal screening phase, which is done for all students district-wide, which is conducted yearly. It's utilizing tests in ELA for like I-ready diagnostic scores, the NJSLA, or past PARC scores, independent reading level, past MAP scores even. And then for math, it's the same, tests minus, of course, the independent reading level. That, all that information is then entered into a matrix system, which we've also developed. The matrix system is really kind of an important change that we've made in how we analyze, collect, and, you know, kind of value our data. So the matrix system, we take this data from across a three-year span for every student, and put it into this system. The system is then able, we're able to locally norm the system, which is really important for getting kind of reliable, meaningful information about how our students perform compared to each other, which is really advantageous and somewhat rare among gifted identification systems. Local norming is usually a highly sought-after thing that is sometimes hard to achieve. So we've managed to achieve that, which is really good. That system is able to, allows us to produce standard deviations for all of our students. They, you know, we're able to create these Z scores with the standard deviation analysis, so that we can very clearly compare these kind of student, the student data in a strong way. So the Z scores are put into domain-specific areas, so ELA and math, and then also an overall category. The way that we, when we, when we look at this data, we place students with a Z score in the top approximately 10% overall, or the top approximately 5% in one category, so like ELA only, or math only, for instance. We place those students into the consideration phase. Students who do not meet those criteria are not placed into the consideration phase. However, those students still are, it is still possible for those students to get added to that phase. We strongly believe that test scores are not the end-all-be-all for GNT selection. So we have referrals, which we collect. So there, we have these referral forums for teachers, or for parents, or guardians. And they can access those by request, we're hoping in the future as well, through our school website. And we accept those referrals at any time. And when those referrals are provided, those students wind up entering a kind of a referral pool. And students who are entered into that pool prior to around November 30th are added right into the consideration phase for the current year. And you'll see in a bit that the students who, if the referral comes in after that date, they're added to a watch list, which we'll talk about in a minute. But those students are, who are referred, and then the students who met the test criteria are added to this consideration phase, where we collect a lot of important data for students. That data can include underrepresented population status. It includes feedback from teachers with identification forms that we send out. We really think that's important, to get feedback from the teachers about these students, to see all sorts of things. Different skills that they might have that don't show up on tests, different propensities, or trick character traits that might be valuable, or might, you know, make them a strong candidate, or that don't necessarily show up on tests, lots of important things we get from the student-teacher, or the students-teacher reports. We collect things as well, like grades, possibly other data, even things maybe like attendance, just as much data as we can to kind of help our selection committee out. We possibly even conduct a student interview if necessary, especially if we find that the the information is conflicting, or something like that. So we take all of that data, and then we bring it to our selection committee. We can scroll down a bit if possible. Very nice. So the selection committee considers all of that information, and then selects students for our available spots in the program. And this is kind of where that need-based thing comes back that we mentioned before. We select based on priority of need, so students who we feel are in most need, and also indicators of potential success. So, you know, from those who have the greatest need, we choose as well those who we feel are the most likely to succeed in the program, the most likely to benefit from the program. So from that information, the committee either selects a student, which places them then into the GNT services, you know, and then they receive programming, which we'll talk about a little bit more later, or they opt not to select the student at that time. Students who are not selected at that time can possibly be put on that watch list that I mentioned earlier, based on suggestions from the committee, you know, a student that they might want to come back to, to review later. A student who they might see a potential in being a candidate in the future. Those students get added to the watch list, along with, as I mentioned before, the students who are referred after that approximately November 30th cutoff. So this watch list kind of serves as a way for us to collect these students who we feel might be strong candidates in the future. And these are students who, there's, again, there's some sort of indicator, whether it be those referrals, or the committee's suggestions, or even something like prior GNT status. So if a student was in gifted and talented program before, and isn't now for some reason, you know, we might have them on that watch list to kind of see. But students who are on the watch list automatically get placed into the consideration phase for the next year. So that they're automatically, the committee will specifically consider them the next year if they wind up on the watch list. I think we can scroll down a bit more, if possible. So then, when it comes to the GNT services themselves, students who finish the year in GNT are then potentially up for reselection. This is another element that we've added. This is a, you know, a significant change that has arisen, you know, and something the committee felt very strongly about, that especially as a part of that need-based focus. We felt that we needed to be constantly considering each year the those candidates who are the most in need, that we needed to kind of take a new look each year, and make sure that we always were selecting those students that are most in need. You know, and I think occasionally in the past, you know, we've had situations before where, you know, we don't have unlimited resources, we don't have unlimited spots that we can have in the program. So we have situations sometimes where the program might be full with students, and there are students left who we think could strongly benefit from the program, who would fit very well and who need the program, but we might not be able to admit them. Meanwhile, there might be students who have been in the program for, you know, multiple years in a row, and they might be a good member of the program, and, you know, they might still be benefiting, but they might not be in need as much as some of these other students who might not be included. You know, so conducting this yearly reselection, we feel really makes sure that we hit that goal of including all the students that are most in need of these services. So the way that we handle this is students who are entering fourth, sixth, and eighth grade each year. So if they finished the year in GNT in third, fifth, or seventh, they are automatically included in GNT the next year. So we're not doing a 100% reselection each year, we're kind of doing like a half and half each year. Meanwhile, the students who are entering third, fifth, and seventh grades, so the ones who finished the year in GNT in second, fourth, or sixth grade, are automatically, what we say, exited from the program, which essentially means they are added into the watch list, along with all of the other students who we've been, you know, kind of keeping an eye on and are on the watch list, and along with all of the other students who might qualify, you know, maybe ones who weren't in the program before, but now qualified based on their scores, or based on a referral, or something. And all of those students are then considered, or reconsidered, for entry into the program. You know, and again, this is a way for us to kind of make sure that we're always, every year, finding the ones who are most in need. You know, while this is a significant change, at the same time, at least in my personal opinion, you know, I certainly don't see us reselecting the entire program every year. I think there's going to be a lot of crossover. You know, I think we are fairly good with our identification and our selection choices. So I feel like a lot of students who we select for the program will likely be ones that will get reselected. But occasionally, this will allow us kind of the opportunity to, you know, refresh things a little bit, and, as I said, find those kids who are most in need.
Right. James, let me just, um...
Please.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that over and over in our professional development with the New Jersey Rutgers Gifted Education Conference, and the NJAGC Association for Gifted Children in New Jersey Conference, that is a repeated topic that comes up, and from what we gathered, that is something that districts do. Reselection is something that districts do every year for all of the students. That is a common practice and a standard. So what we thought would be fair would be to provide students the opportunity, if they were selected to be in GNT, to stay in for two years. What we do think is also fair is to make sure that we're considering students that are having, or experiencing changes in their abilities and their, you know, performance in school, and having those students to be considered at times, and having students that move in, and all of that. So we thought this type of reselection fit our needs at Logan. Other districts that do that yearly reselection are using pretty much, you know, the IQ score, that group IQ score that we no longer use in Logan, and other districts do, and just sort of, you know, lop off that top 10%, and have those students be included through that screener, and then that's, you know, it's kind of like an easier process if you're doing a complete reselection. But we decided, you know, that we wanted, we really take into and value the multiple measures criteria, and we really do take into consideration many factors and many components of the child, and give them opportunities to stay in longer, and then give other students opportunities to come in as well.
Right. Absolutely. So I think, to end, if possible, just right here, th- these parts will probably go fairly quickly through, because, you know, while we felt it was important, the committee felt it was important to establish procedures for these things. These are things that don't arise all that often, so I'm gonna move fairly quickly through these, but these are exit or furlough criteria. So this isn't like a reselection-type exit, this is like our process for students who may need to be exited from the program, you know, mid-year for some reason or another. So it mostly boils down to, you know, if a student has some sort of, you know, concern or issue having to do with, whether it be, you know, like, struggling to follow the expectations of the GNT program, or behavioral expectations, or struggle to keep up with in-class performance that a parent, or guardian, or a teacher, or an administrator can submit an exit recommendation form to, like, essentially suggest that the student stop receiving GNT services. That request then goes to a pre-committee review, which is essentially just gathering information to provide to the committee, where the committee then would make a decision based on that student, and that decision may include removing that student from GNT for the year, or possibly even just some, like, temporary kind of furlough. You know, maybe to let a student get back on top of grades, or whatever, you know, other circumstance might be going on. And then in addition to that, we felt it was important to establish an appeals process for stakeholders, especially like parents or guardians, who might want to appeal a decision, whether it's having to do with selection, or an exit/furlough. This just establishes a procedure by which parents or guardians can do that, and we wanted that to be a formal procedure. So we've outlined that there. I don't know if there's anything for you to add there, Laura, or not?
Nope.
No? Okay. So we can move on to kind of the fun part. The programming, as I mentioned before, we wanted to make sure we, you know, included that, you know, kind of end on this, you know, kind of fun, high part. So our overarching goal of GNT programming is to provide students with opportunities to be creative, challenged, collaborative, and to capture their interest. That was a really big one, and as I mentioned before, that And as I mentioned before, that, that choice-based programming, I think, really makes a big impact with capturing their interest. And because of that, a lot of these programs have kind of developed and continued and become popular, at least among the students and among me. I really like a lot of them as well. So these are prior years programming options. They're a little different than we'll do this year, because, you know, obviously our, our different circumstances of this year, we're going to have online, you know, and remote programming. But we thought it was worthwhile to highlight some of the past programming as well, which I'm sure will certainly come back, and inspired some of the online programming too. So I don't necessarily need, I, I don't know that we need to read through each one of these, but I think it was just valid to kind of leave them there, and, you know, let you be able to take a look at them. But for our pullout programs, we have lots of different variety, whether they be competitions, or scientific-type activities, or discussion and debate-type activities, or musical activities, or research activities, or building activities. We have all sorts of variety there, all driven by student interest. And then as far as push-in programs, we have programs that have, that they've been in math classes, they've been in history classes, they've been in English classes, all to kind of help facilitate and enrich the instruction within that content area. And then for our next slide, we're talking more about the programming for this year. So this is kind of our, our adaptation to the remote and online learning, still with the same goal, but obviously some things changing a bit. So one option that we're running this year is a mix, music mixing and production program, which is kind of an offshoot of that School of Rock program from past years, which is obviously a music-based program. So it involves music creativity, but by, it's, it's using computers, instead of instruments necessarily, to mix, to alter, to produce music, rather than instruments to perform it. It's something I am personally involved in, and I thought I could kind of extend my expertise to that area. And I think it's something that the kids, especially if they have a music interest, can really kind of dig into, and it'll be a unique experience for them. Then another one that we have, which is a tie-over from prior years, this is one that it happened in person and can function online as well, is our program Political Literacy, especially for our older students, seventh and eighth graders, where students discuss, debate, and learn about the background of various political issues. You know, and the different topics, policies, and, you know, where the, where each of our parties stand on these issues. The kids get to really dive into some debate. They get to kind of, again, look at the specific policy standpoints that each party has, and get to kind of compare and contrast some. You know, it winds up with a lot of kind of student-led discussion and debate. I certainly, you know, try to keep myself out of there as much as possible, and, you know, let the students kind of have their own voices to, to kind of bounce off of each other. Then we, we've begun our participation in the New Jersey Middle Academic League, which is an online quiz bowl-type competition. It has a number of meets throughout the year that we're signed up for. So we have, I think, two teams that are going to be signed up for the Middle Academic League to compete in. Another one is, another competition is the Word Masters Challenge, which has to do with analogies and vocabulary. And once again, it has various competitions throughout the year. And then as kind of a supplement to both of those, we have the Coding, Riddles, and Chess program. And again, that's meant to be sort of supplementary to those two competitive programs, because there's obviously time, there's like downtime in between the competitions or the practices for those. So these are all, this coding, riddles, and chess kind of challenges are all things to kind of take up that time in between those meetings to help kids, you know, kind of remain sharp, you know, to help the team continue to kind of build a rapport with each other in between the competitions. So that's what we're planning to run this year. And I believe that about sums it up for us. I don't know if Laura has anything to add. I know, obviously, we'd like to go to any possible questions that you may have. But Laura, if you have anything left?
No, I don't.
No? Okay. We have some links there that, you know, are, are available. There's just, a, a lot of the links there are things that were in our presentation, but maybe just outlined a little bit more in those links. But we wanted now to, you know, be able to open things up and take any questions that you might have.
So Laura, before we pass it over to questions, just want to ask you, make sure that you make this available to Lisa. So Lisa will post this on the board members webpage, so that they'll have access to this presentation.
Okay.
Okay?
Absolutely.
Comments or questions from the board members?
I do have a number of questions. First of all, was there any consideration to have parents on the committee? You spoke about staff members, but any parents of GNT students on the committee?
Yes. In fact, I was just talking with Pat about that. Mrs. Hill, we're going to put it out there for a parent, a parent to join.
Okay. And this one is more of just a, a comment, if you will. It just seems like to me, you know, I've been on the board for a number of years now, and it seems like to me that year after year, we're basically just starting over from square one. I believe it's three years ago, we hired Mr. Conklin specifically for this position in the hopes that the program would be better developed, and it just feels like every year, we're kind of starting over again. And I'm not really understanding why it's taking so long to get it off the ground. I can't remember any year where we started in September. I mean, it sounds like, and I could be wrong, it sounds like you're saying that the starting date is not going to be until December?
Uh, I, I can jump in on that one. For that, so we do a, a late, the, the November 30th date is kind of our, our cutoff for late additions to it. So we certainly have hopes to begin a lot earlier than, than that. And, you know, we, we will be beginning a lot earlier than that. That is kind of our cutoff for that November 30th date, is our cutoff for late additions to the program. So like, that's kind of the date that we felt that if we began the program by that date, students could still be added into an existing program happening that year, without being too far behind, that, you know, they, they then would struggle to, you know, participate, struggle to contribute. So that's why that date exists. But the actual start date is certainly intended to be a lot earlier.
But you don't have a specific start date in mind as of yet?
Typically, so like the, the past couple of years, a lot of the times, our start date has to do with some with selection. You know, so once, once we're able to get the committee together and conduct our selection, collect all of our data, you know, which includes reaching out to all of the teachers of the students, you know, and collecting all of that information for the candidates, and then we're able to get the committee together and conduct selection. Our goal is, is typically to have that happen by end of September. I know last year, we had a particularly delayed start just due to some of the, you know, kind of slowdowns with collecting that data. We were also, I think we were, we were contemplating some of these changes of, you know, how some of our selection might occur, like the, for instance, the reselection was something that we were contemplating doing for the past, this past year. And we weren't sure quite yet if that was something that we could do, especially because it was something new, it was something that we were afraid would be somewhat blindsiding to parents especially. So that was something that we, we had to discuss with the committee. So it was, it delayed us a little bit, because we had to meet with the committee to decide on whether or not we would do that, and then had to meet with the committee after making that decision to actually wind up doing the selection itself. So that, I think, is part of the, the reasoning that we had.
Okay, but it seems like to me that there, there's no continuity of the program for the students who are already in the program. So last year, we can take last year for the example, it didn't start until, I believe, like about November, late October. And then, of course, with the pandemic, you know, schools closed down in March. But even at that point, there was no pullout, or there was no continuation of the program. So now we're talking about this year possibly not starting until November, or early, late November again. And so the students who are in the program are experiencing these, these big gaps, where they're not being serviced at all.
Laura, do you want to address that, or do you want me to address that? I'll address it. Well, Renee, I can, I can, I hear your frustration, and I understand it. I think that there has to be some consideration of, with the pandemic, and that there's no question about that, that the highest priority was going remote last spring that we've never experienced before. And even this year, the focus and the concentration has been on the main instruction, and has to be. Also, we are, as, as we began the program, a big part of James and Laura was learning and growing. And I think it was, it was evident from tonight's presentation that they just didn't plow into just having a program, but really had the research in, and the backing, and, and the, they understand based on the courses that James, that James is taking of the types of programs. So is it a program that is in full swing? Absolutely not yet. But I think we're setting good groundwork for the future, as well as for the children who are, especially in the selection process, that we're not just doing it an easy way. And the other thing is that we are experiencing not only the pandemic, but we're also experiencing cuts in state aid. And so James is now split, very strong, split between teaching ELA and supporting the GNT program. And then when we went into the remote model in the, in the, in the, in September, because of not mixing cohorts in the middle school, James, we have to add another ELA program, and another ELA class for James to take. So James is really full-time ELA and doing GNT on the side. This is not something we wanted, but it is something that we are faced with, because the number one priority is trying to be successful in hybrid learning, as well as not mixing cohorts and providing for when the children come back. So it's very complicated. I don't, I, I would ask you, you to, just, uh, just a little bit of understanding that not being judged from, from March of last year, even through right now, as, as if we are in a regular situation. But I do know that there is a commitment, and I think it was obvious tonight from James's presentation and from Laura, that there's a commitment to making this program a strong program for the children. So as a parent, I appreciate your frustration of wishing that it could be perfect, and, and really better. But I do know that when the program gets started, and I know this will be soon, and the children will benefit from it. That's, that's all.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, I do have just a couple more questions. And I'm sorry to monopolize, I was just trying to take notes as you were going through.
Just those questions with Pat on, outside of this, because we have the rest of the work session agenda, and there's an executive session scheduled for this too.
Well, honestly, I would have if the presentation had been posted, and I was aware that we were going to be going through these specific items, so.
The presentation is really just to begin to share with the board, as well as the community who's present, an overview of the work that is being done. So it is not a be-all and end-all, you, you're not voting on any, any presentation, any Gifted and Talented Program tonight, that's not what we do. So if you want to address this with me, I am more than willing, with Laura and James, we could have a conversation, or just with me by myself. So I, I, I think that would be the place where we could, we could meet.
Okay, but the other questions that I have, I think it would be important for the community to hear it as well. So we can bring it up at another meeting, that's fine.
Okay, thanks, Renee.
Okay. But if, any other questions from board members? Okay. Frank, I'll move on, okay? Since we only have about 10 minutes left, and I do appreciate, let me just say, James, I really do appreciate your presentation, and Laura also. It was valuable and insightful for all the work that you've done. So we, we do appreciate, and we look forward to hearing more from you. We're going to move to the work session agenda. And many of these things, I don't think, any of these issues, other than the added agenda items, were, are new. So I would ask the board, and Sarah, I'm going to ask you to slide down the work session. Okay, right there, stop for a second, and go back up to the contracts, just if you, so everybody can see what we're looking at. Yeah, okay, so right there, anybody have questions that, or anything in front of you, that, anything that was referenced in the weekend memo that's going to be on the agenda, please feel free. And then I'm just going to address anything that's on the added agenda, because obviously you didn't have, you didn't have time to, I didn't have time to fill in your background on that from the weekend memo. So open up the questions on anything on the agenda.
So, hi, this is Kim, good evening. I have a question about the after-school clubs. The list that was on the board members only, is, is that the only ones that are being offered at this time? And if the answer is yes, is it, is it truncated from normal because of the environment that we're in? And if, again, the answer is yes, then will the, will, will there be additional ones, and maybe a little bit more offered in the spring?
Kim, because of the cuts in state aid, and most of the normally presented, that previously presented clubs have been cut from the budget. And so band and choir were kept, student council was kept. But the other ones are not, have not been budgeted for, they were not in our original budget. The only clubs that are, that will be, you'll be seeing more of, are the clubs that are, we're going to be funding through the school Climate Transformation Grant. So clubs that have to do with student voice, clubs that have to do with mentoring, clubs that have to do with anything that supports the goals of the school Climate Transformation Grant are being reviewed by the Doc, Dr. Shelley Zion and the Rowan University, and the grant, to make sure that they meet the grant, and then that, that will be shared with you. But that's being funded through the grant. I'm sorry to say that, but that's our situation. It really doesn't have to do with the pandemic, it has to do with funding.
Okay, so, yeah, I appreciate that reminder. I mean, just given all that's been going on, I kind of forgot that there's also a secondary, primary joint situation with the funding. My, so then I'm wondering, are there, or has there been, has it been explored for opportunities to partner with neighboring educational institutions or nonprofits? For instance, we do so much with Dr. Shelley Zion through Rowan. Is there anything that perhaps can be offered in that vein? Or with, you know, other institutions, since a lot of people are also online? Just, just to provide something, I mean, I, I know that it's a lot of online, but perhaps if it's something that piques an interest, or has a little bit different structure to it, that it might be amenable. It just, when I first saw it, it just looked disappointing.
There, there.
And there's a lot of disappointment going on right now in this year, so.
Kim, we'll, we'll keep our eyes open. I will tell you, our focus right now has been on developing a strong remote and hybrid instruction program in a pathway that's not, not been preceded by anything before, as well as trying to meet the needs, the goals of the school Climate Transformation Grant. So that's been our focus. If there's anything else that comes to our attention, or your attention, that we could afford, but that we really, there's not, no money is, you know, budgeted for it, but we'll keep our eyes out. So thank you for that reminder. Any other questions from anyone? If there are no other questions, I think I'll move to the added agenda items, just so you have a background knowledge on, on some of those items. So Sarah, I'm going to ask you to pull up the added agenda from the work, from the regular session. These were added since the weekend. Obviously, Motion K is self-explanatory. We always like to post the maternity leaves, because once the board approves someone going on maternity leave, then we're, we can, I can start advertising for a replacement teacher. So that's why I have that there. As Motion L is hiring as a permanent teacher, Irina Lefkowitz, who was hired on a temporary basis in the summer, when we really did not know the future of where we were going with remote learning, hybrid learning, and staffing, and, and all that. So we hired Mrs. Lefkowitz as a, just a replacement teacher for the first marking period, just to see where we were going. We did that cautiously, but Mrs. Lefkowitz has been extremely successful in adapting to the environment that she is in. And for that reason, and there are, she has a full classroom of students that would be very disappointed if we didn't continue her employment. So we are now at a spot. So we are now at a spot that we believe that, that, that was budgeted for and this absence came from as a result. It was not an additional position. It's a result of Mr. Morello being, moving on regretfully as an administrator and then Mrs. Sweeney moving on to first grade. So that's what opened the kindergarten position. So that explains that. The motion M is to, right now, and I think I explained it in the weekend memo, that we have a variety of circumstances popping up continuously based on leave requests, based on situations at home from parents, teachers who are parents, just a variety of situations that I need, I would like to make sure that I have the authority to hire replacements and they would be temporary replacements to fill the needs as, as staffing becomes an issue. And that is an ongoing issue that we, that we have because of the pandemic. If a, if a staff member has a family member who has to be quarantined, you can see how that would be a ripple effect. So I have to, I would appreciate the support, the support of the board to give me that authority or else it's going to be hard to run a district. The motion N is to give, to give recognition to the steadfastness of our pedestrian patrol person who has been with us several years now, and that's Patty Daniker. And she has always been working as, we call our crossing guards that are employed by the district pedestrian patrol. She's been at a six-hour, every half hour, for every half hour she puts in back there. And I think that this shows that she is dedicated to continue that position. So I'm asking that we approve the increase in that for only those people who, that they, we still would start with six hours for no experience and then after two years of experience, go on to seven, $7. And then sliding down further, the motion O is a request by our school counselor over at Center Square School to work with a supervisor so she can continue her certification for behavior, to become a behavior analyst. And finally, Dr. Jansen is asking that her first grade child be granted the ability to come to Logan as a, as a student. And this is, this is in accordance with the board policy on attendance of non-resident children of staff members. And our first grade class size is extremely low. So this is not creating a burden to our first grade at all. Our first grade is at a number of 45 and that's divided by three teachers. And so one more person is by no means going to add any type of hindrance. So those are the added agenda item. Frank, I'm going to hand it over to you. You could, we can go back to the work session agenda. I think we'll probably have to make the executive session at the end of the regular session because we will have no time for that.
Okay, that's fine. Does board have any other questions on regarding the agenda, the added agenda items?
No.
Okay, all right. We have four minutes to lay the clock and that's when we can go back and, and come into the regular meeting. So I think if everybody wants to sign out of this one and, and start heading over to the regular meeting, it'd be fine.
And community members should do the same thing, right, Frank?
Yes. Yes, there's a link on the board webpage to, to where they need to sign in on.
Okay, thank you.
Two minutes.